On record.
Good evening, welcome to the City of Lincoln City City Council meeting for Monday, December 10th. It is 6:00 PM. And of course, I've shot right past my little intro. Why not finish up strong? If you wish to speak on an agenda or non-agenda item, please sign up on the sheet near the entrance door to council chambers. You'll be called to speak during the public comment section. Comments or testimony on agenda items listed under public hearing, public comment will be taken at that time. Roll call, please.
Don Williams.
Here.
Dick Anderson.
Yes.
Riley Hoagland.
Here.
Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Judy Casper.
Here.
And Susan Walkie.
Here.
Now, could you please all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. All right, we just roll straight into the consent agenda. Cooperative Improvement Agreement, ODOT, and URA City Cutler Vision Projects and regular meeting minutes of work session, November 19th, 2018.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I was absent on November 19th, but I did get to review the Channel 4 audio and video of the minutes.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I had a few corrections to the minutes, but I've sent them to the city recorder.
Thank you. You have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Comments from citizens present on agenda, non-agenda items. Whoop, we're working on it, okay. And then Ron, while we have a minute. Ron, I want to thank the city staff for all the great holiday decorations around town. They look terrific. Thanks for putting those up. Okay. So, the sign ordinance is a public hearing, right? Yes, no? So, we, okay, so we'll be calling you during that, during the sign. And affordable housing, same thing? Yeah? So, Nelscott Reef. So, folks who signed up for the public hearing portions will call you then, okay? Right? Yeah? Yeah, okay. John Force.
Hi, everybody. I'm John Force. 1820 Northeast West Devils Lake Road, Lincoln City. I would like to bring to the city councilor's attention a few correspondences that illustrate the ongoing problems within the city administration in regards to the Nelscott Reef Big Wave Classic. After citing and finding last year's group that almost resulted in spectators being crushed by rolling logs in the surf on city property led by Gabe Smith, the city manager has rewarded him with a permit to run an event in competition with mine this season. The first of those letters was authored by Paul Schulte, the owner of Liquid Militia, who has sponsored the Nelscott Reef Big Wave Classic since its inception 15 years ago. We were actually in discussion to go big this year with a $50,000 purse and operating budget of around $100,000 to launch his new clothing line. I am lucky he hasn't pulled out before with all the problems created by the absurd policy decisions by the city administration and previous interferences by the rival group. He finally had a spill after Ron issued a permit to Gabe's bogus event, which, by the way, was last Thursday and ran on city property once again with no insurance and no clearance from the city to run that particular day. No traffic control or any of the safeguards required by the special event permits were in place. Needless to say, after all these years, Paul had had enough and discontinued to support the event. The second letter is from Diane Kous, the incoming city councilor and previous manager of Lincoln City Mall. In it, she describes how the mall got bilked out of sponsorship money that went to Gabe as part of his scam masquerading his event as mine. I would be happy to share both letters in their entirety with you. The next correspondence I want to share with you is an appeal hearing decision I requested from Ron Chandler over the issuance of another permit to the same Gabe Smith. Dear Mr. Force, the pleasure meeting with you. This is in response to your appeal of the modification to your special events permit. The additional permit holder has met all the requirements of the Special Event Code, Chapter 5-16, to receive a permit. Therefore, I will not be amending the permits. As previously mentioned, the city is moving forward with the opportunity of hosting the surfing event. I'm excited about the possibilities for the future of the surfing event and what it can bring to Lincoln City. Over the next several weeks, I'll be working on this to present to the city council. Sincerely, Ron Chandler. I ask that one or more of the city councillors be appointed to oversee and monitor these efforts by the city manager and hope that he doesn't propose to bust the surface to Newport to run a competition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John, appreciate it. Mr. Appicello, help me out with something, because I'm a little confused. The, I've got amendments saying we should have continued public hearings to a later time, yet we've got the scripts here. Is this something I should just question the council if you want to just go ahead and put it off another day?
You can, you can ask the council, you can continue all the matters to the future meeting, and then those people that can come, that did show up and want to testify, they can come to that future meeting and testify. Because obviously, if there's continuations, there's, you know, like in the sign ordinance case, there's going to be changes. So, although you can allow, you can open the public hearing and then continue it, but that will be a problem for the new councillors. They'll have to come back and review what's said at this public hearing.
Right. And I don't want to keep these folks longer and just to say, hey, we're not going to do it tonight, so.
Yeah, if, if council has, well, certainly on the sign ordinance, staff is requesting it be continued. And then you have actually several other ordinances under two different ZOA numbers, zoning ordinance amendment numbers, incorporated public hearings as well. So, it's, it is kind of a threshold issue.
Well, because I'd like to kind of clear that up now before we make folks wait, if that's okay with council. So, ZOA 201802, the sign code amendments, what's your wish on that? Continue? We have a recommendation from staff.
I move to continue the sign code amendments to January 28th, 2019, this location this time.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. I think it's a great idea also. Hearing none, do you need a roll call on that one? No? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. So, that was our sign code. So, folks, if you're here for the sign ordinance, we're continuing into our meeting in January, okay?
Second meeting.
Second meeting in January, sorry. Second meeting in January.
And, and, yes, any member of the public, of course, can comment in writing and send that in, and it'll be made part of the record, because the record's open.
Absolutely. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, while we're on that, I assume we're not done with comments yet.
No, but I just wanted to give them a chance to go home if they do. Just wanted to hang around.
Do you mind if we then stay with the other public hearings? Because I think, as far as I'm concerned, we've got the same kind of situation. It occurred to me that if we have those public hearings, and it's not a unanimous vote on the first hear, first reading of the ordinances, then we're back into January anyway, and a new council is going to be voting on it.
And I was kind of planning on voting no just for that purpose, so the new council could have a crack at it.
Well, and, you know, that, well, I guess my point would be having the public hearing and all the testimony and everything for the new council would make more sense. Because quite frankly, I have questions and concerns, and I, I don't see an urgency, but I'm open if someone does see an urgency to.
I do not. I would love to get the holidays over so I could tear into this and come at it as a citizen with a business and discuss this.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make the motion to move both ZOA 2018-03 and ZOA 2018-04, continue them on the first meeting in January, the 14th of January.
Motion to second, discussion? That's okay. Hearing none?
Which date did you say?
The first meeting, which is the 14th of January.
I was agreeing with.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Your honor, you may have people here that want to talk about those items. The best time for them to talk about them would be during the public hearing that you just continued on January 14th or on the 28th.
Right. And folks that came here to speak, I do apologize. I know it's an inconvenience to come to these meetings, but it'd be best then you can have your, your statement on record. Please, if you cannot make it back, send it in writing, it'll be part of the record for us, okay? All right, now, there's one I absolutely cannot read. Thomas Eastman, I don't know what you signed up for.
I'll follow you.
Okay, so we're going to carry that one forward, right? Yeah, so that'll be the next meeting. And, January 14th. Give us a letter, just write, write, yeah, we can just, information@lincolncity.com or org. Oh, okay, just get a card from Ron or somebody.
Hang on, I'll get you a card.
Thank you. Again, thank you, folks, for coming in. I apologize for the inconvenience. At least you didn't have to hang around all night. Okay, we're good to go? Okay. And then Kevin Kenny and Tiny Houses.
That's also a matter.
Oh, that's a public hearing too? Well, okay, I'm sorry, you wanted to talk about the workforce and affordable housing, is that right?
I know.
Okay, so that's in the public hearing too, I'm sorry. I didn't know if it was part of that discussion or not. And then, and then the final one was, it says something about flags, is that was the sign amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. I can't read it. Okay. Yeah, so feel free, take off or hang around and enjoy the spectacle. Go ahead, please.
If they have, if they have information to give to council, can they give that information?
Not now?
It's not a record. Well, it's not in the record if they do it now. So, you recall, we had someone that insisted on speaking at a prior meeting about signs, and we said, okay, we'll take your comments and we'll enter it into the record. But that's pretty inefficient for everyone involved, because, and especially with signs, because that ordinance is going to have some changes. So, I encourage everyone to submit written comments and then come in and explain your written comments at the podium when, when you can during the public hearing.
Okay.
So, if I could, I think there's still some confusion out there.
Okay, go ahead and summarize.
Are you going to do it?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I was just going to say, so, the fellow that was going to speak to us about tiny houses, that's not going to be discussed until January 14th, so can you come back then or send us your?
Hand it to the city recorder.
Well, we need it to go into the record.
Well, you can, you can give it to the city recorder, we'll put it in the record for the upcoming hearing. So, it'll be in the packet for the next meeting.
Thank you.
And then the person about the flags, that's going to be on the 28th.
Okay, and the flag, and the sign amendments, the 28th, is that what we decided?
Yes.
Okay, so, sign amendment, sign code amendment, 28th. Okay?
Including the flags.
Including the flags. Okay. So, anyone who did not sign up, who wished to speak on a subject not involving those things? All right, seeing none.
Sorry.
That's just the way it works sometimes, hate to say it. Better than getting bad information. All right, well, we're rolling through, am I skipping, skipping?
Thank you so much.
When he was first on the list, I realized it's about the sign ordinance, but I didn't get the word about an hour or two ago that it was.
Come on forward then, and, okay, just so you know, yeah, come on up, sit down.
As a resident of Lincoln City.
Come, sit down and.
My name is Paul Mastrata, 1343 Northwest 13th Street, Lincoln City.
I'm going to interrupt you just for a second, just so you know, it will not be part of the public record.
I understand that.
Okay.
And I got that message a little bit too late, but let me get my thing here. And, there we go. Okay. Don't do that to me. I'll come back here. It seems once again the business community finds itself at odds with the government at large. I always wonder where things like the sign ordinance come from. As if it isn't tough enough to do business in the city without further constraints on reaching out to customers. The use of banners and flags have always been allowed, and it's an inexpensive way to reach customers and visitors. It lets them know that you're at least open and an inkling of what you have to offer them. Making these things subject to a permit fee seems a bit harsh at best. They've always been allowed and even encouraged by the city. They've made allowances in the concrete for their installation and placement. They've encouraged them by supplying them through the Chamber of Commerce. Not only that, but the further restrictions on the use of smaller signs and streamers, it just doesn't seem right. We would also not be allowed to use any appliance which emits anything to the atmosphere. Does that mean people can't vape out in front of a business? Does that mean that we can't stand with our coffee cups with logos on them out in front of a business? What about my bubble machine? Does that mean that can't be used either? I mean, what about the sound ordinance portion of this? Does that mean that the outlet mall can't play music on their outdoor speakers? It's like, somebody needs to think about all these things. You know, flags in general, does that mean if I take my logo and put it on a flag that looks like the American flag attached to one standard, it's good enough? Because if not, then you're telling me that you do control content of what's in a sign, which the city has with, the mayor's sign said they don't regulate content, but it looks to me like we're actually doing that. You know, things like this need to be taken into consideration. And yes, I will be back with demonstrable evidence of all these types of things. And I realize that it's not in the record, I didn't get the, the word until too late, but I'm here. And I do believe I have the right to speak to my city council. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming forward. Okay, so, one last time, anyone who did not sign up wished to speak at this time? Seeing none, we move on. And just keep me straight here, because these are all in very small print. We're skipping over G6, G7, G8, G9, but G10? Tree protection?
No, but 6 through 10 all reflect the public hearing, so.
Okay, that's what I thought, but.
Yeah, it's just that the second or the third public hearing had as a component several ordinances.
Thank you. Okay, so then, that takes us to... Rolling down, rolling down, resolutions. Resolution 2018-22, a resolution declaring the official results of the canvas of votes of the general election held in the City of Lincoln City, Oregon on November 6th, 2018. Who gets the joy of that?
The person.
City of Oregon.
It's just required by law, and the canvas of votes is attached, and I recommend approval.
Thank you. You have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll recommend approval of Resolution 2018-22, a resolution declaring the official results of the canvas of votes of the general election held in the City of Lincoln City, Oregon on November 6th, 2018.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Resolution 2018-21, a resolution adopting the supplemental budget of the City of Lincoln City, Oregon for fiscal year 2018-19, as approved by the city council and making appropriations.
We need Debbie.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, we don't really. No offense.
Oh, we need Debbie. Are you kidding me?
She's the one with the shell game.
She's the one with the shell game. I like that little three-card monte.
No, I don't see my.
Okay, take your time. We're way ahead of schedule. Catch your breath, Deb, it's all good.
Couple items for supplemental budget tonight. This supplemental budget does not require a public hearing or public notice. Sorry, I shouldn't have run down the hall.
Take your breath. We've got plenty of time, it's all good.
So, the first request is a little confusing, because I kind of made a mess. If you remember, a few meetings ago, we had a budget resolution where we asked to move forward some monies for the community center, for some exterior repair. And they had actually wanted $35,000, but because of a miscommunication, I'd only done $15,000. And so I had taken it out of contingency and put it in capital. However, there's no contingency in this fund. Because all of the reserves in this fund are actually already budgeted as a capital reserve. So, although I think it was good to bring that request to council, because it was not a specific item that was budgeted for, it didn't actually require a resolution. So, part of this is to reverse that. And then our beginning fund balance was lower than what we had anticipated, so since I'm making the change, I wanted to correct the beginning fund balance too, so that we don't have more appropriation than what we have funds for in this fund. And that's really all there is to the first one, but it's very confusing.
Shame on you. She wants to run.
I didn't make her run.
She ran herself.
Yeah, I was watching you and doing some other stuff on my computer. The second item, Explorer Lincoln City, formerly the VCB, is requesting a rollover of money, $15,000, for a project that was budgeted in the 1718 fiscal year for a fourth-floor conference room remodel. They had budgeted $20,000, and work had started on this project, however, it stopped and contractor left. So, they've rebid this for a new contractor and have a estimate of $15,000 to complete the work. And then the third item is a car ran into one of our signs, and we got reimbursed from our insurance. That goes into the revenue, so we're asking to add $5,000 in the expense appropriation so we can spend the money we got from CIS to fix the sign. And those are the three items. I think I need to do some more running.
We have an amazing community center. Our cultural, yeah.
Yes, yes, we do, and I should be there a little more often, or even sometimes.
Any questions? No? Yes?
Yes. So, Debbie, when I'm looking at the budget, am I understanding then on the facilities capital fund, we would be starting with a different ending balance or beginning balance, rather than the $1,657, but start it with 1, 5, 8, 1?
Right.
The one you had initially.
We're starting with less money than what we had budgeted for, that's correct.
And then, the line item, reserve future years, gets reduced by 75, $75,000 plus the, your exact amount? Is that where?
By the $75,000 plus the?
Plus the 15.
Yeah, which.
So, both, both are going to come out of that line item?
Yeah.
And that's leaving us a balance in that line item of nine, still 906,000.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. That's where I want to make sure where we were really working. The other, the questions.
I'm sorry, we'll also be taking out the difference between the $35,000 and the $15,000 we'll be spending for the community center out of that reserve.
Oh, so that comes, comes out of there too?
Yes.
Oh, okay. The question I had, because I, and your talk was better than the staff report, because my question was really, was this costing us $35,000, you know, 20 plus 15? But, but really, the 20 that was originally budgeted just wasn't ever spent, correct? 5,000 of it must have been spent.
I think we had, we had some expenditure on other line items that were higher than what we had estimated, and that's why the, the beginning balance is lower. It's not because of the community center project, they actually didn't spend anything last year.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I've jumped to the Explorer Lincoln City.
Yeah. Yes, their beginning fund balance is higher, because they didn't spend. I'm not sure actually how much they spent. I think there was some loss or increase in the total cost of this project because of the stoppage and having to restart it with somebody else.
That's what I was trying to get at, is, is this project now costing $35,000 instead of 20?
It's, it's not, no, it's not the whole amount, so it's less than that. I should have looked, I'm sorry. I can, I can find out on that.
And?
But they didn't, they had not spent the whole amount, no.
And that, that's probably why the beginning balance was higher, because in that.
Along with some other savings, but yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. I should have put that in there. Very logical question.
Further questions? No? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Motion?
I move to approve Resolution 2018-21, adopting the supplemental budget for fiscal year 2018-19.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, and just because we're fiddling with money, Kathy, I'm going to go ahead and do a roll call.
Williams.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hoagland.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
And Walkie.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Resolution 2018-21. Wait, is that, nope.
Nope.
Your honor, before you, before you get there, could you just go back? The URA, right before this meeting, approved the Cooperative Improvement Agreement and did a roll call vote. While the agreement, we're not sending the State of Oregon money, we're, we're asking for permission to build in the right-of-way, and it's a $300,000 project that we're building. For consistency, you might want to vote again on the Cooperative Improvement Agreement and do it by roll call, just because you're going to be spending money.
All right, council, you have a motion?
So, we need another motion, and.
I would just do a second.
A motion to approve the Cooperative Improvement Agreement with ODOT and Urban Renewal and City.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. As I was not here, my apologies, literally missed that one. I'm going to abstain, will that leave us with a quorum? For vote? Okay, I don't know who was here. So, okay.
And this is concerning the Cutler Vision Projects.
Right. Okay. Roll call, please.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hoagland.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
Walkie.
Yes.
And Williams, excuse, abstained.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Appicello. Okay, special order business, City Hall, fourth-floor stairs. Hi.
Hi, good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, we're asking for a construction contractor to work to build some stairs that will serve the career tech upstairs. So, it'll come from the fourth floor, behind you actually, onto galley there, as it loops around and becomes harbor. So, the way, that way, that part of the building has a direct access to, first of all, to terra firma, they won't be, they won't have to come down onto the deck here. They won't be, they won't have to come down onto the deck here. And the fire marshal recommended that we add that access last year. So, last year's budget, we, you guys approved it. We did go, we did go out for bids. First of all, the stairs were designed by an architect. We do have a building permit. We went out to bid. We opened bids on November 28. There were only, there was only one bidder. However, this company, we researched them. We haven't had work done by them before. They're out of Silverton. Their name is FFO SIL Contracting and Management. They were responsible and responsive, and so we're recommending that we award the contract to them in the amount of $74,448, with a contingency of 10% of that amount, for a total of $81,893.
Any questions? How, I guess I should read this closer. How many steps are we talking about?
About three flights.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just, I don't know exactly the, I didn't look.
Okay, so that's significant, okay.
Yeah, it's significant.
I was thinking of the door to nowhere that just kind of is like six feet above the...
No, that's on this side.
Okay.
Yeah, these will be completely different.
Little jump.
A new door, a new entrance and exit, yeah.
Got it, okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, Stephanie, I'm assuming that, because the write-up didn't say where the contractor was from, but now you've done Silverton. Is there anything unique about this stairway or why local contractors aren't interested in local jobs?
I honestly do not know. I specifically sent this notice, an email, to as many of our local commercial contractors that I could think of, and just, these are the only guys that bid.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
When did you send that out?
When we advertised sometime in October. Or early November of this year, yeah.
November of this year?
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe they're busy, I don't know.
They are busy. There's no doubt about that.
I've been trying to find a remodeler.
Yeah.
Months, and it's not around. Oh, they're around, but they're busy.
They're busy.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you. Motion?
I move to award the construction contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, FFO SIL Contracting and Management PC, in the amount of $74,448 and a contingency of $7,445, for a total amount of $81,893.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Other than, thank you for writing that motion down, that's perfect. Hearing no one else, roll call, please.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Stephanie?
Thank you.
$100,000 stairway?
It's a nice set of stairs.
I mean...
At least I'm happy that it's three floors, rather than six feet that I thought it was. Okay.
I really need two...
Been a while since you had anything built.
...degress from that upstairs.
I guess I should ask, these are metal stairs and such, right? Yeah, that's what I figured. Not cheap. Okay, appointment to the library board. Tamara, and I'm sorry, Amati? Does someone know how to pronounce Tamara's last name? Thank you. Leave me hanging here. Okay?
Tamara. Tammy.
Amara? Tamara?
Tamara.
Okay, anyone who interviewed?
Not me.
I interviewed Tamara last week, and I, she has previously served on the library board. She took a little respite, and she would like to be reappointed, and I recommend a reappointment.
Need a second?
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion was I move to appoint Tamara Amati to the library board with a term expiring June 30, 2020.
All right, thank you. Second again?
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Welcome back, thank you very much. Imagine Lincoln City Community Vision Statement. So, I have a little script here. The next item of business is a review of the Imagine Lincoln City Community Vision Statement. Imagine Lincoln City is the culmination of a year-long process designed to identify what the members of the community want their city to be like over the next 20 years or so. It is intended to form the basis for goals and policies to be contained in the new comprehensive plan that the Planning and Community Development Department is developing. That is a lot of D's. This is not a public hearing, but the councils will accept any public comment on the vision statement before making any decisions about accepting this document. Before public comments, staff will present a report. After that, any member of the public can provide comments within a three-minute limit. Please present the staff report.
It's a very brief report. You have the draft vision statement before you. It's the result of quite a long process with a consultant and a management team, a lot of public outreach, a lot of public participation. The, we submitted a draft to the Planning Commission back in September. They recommended some changes to it after a couple of meetings, and we took it back to them in late October with the changes, and they accepted those changes and made a recommendation to the council that you accept the vision statement. There is, there is a typo in it that needs to be corrected, and if there's any other changes you want, we can do that. I didn't have the consultant make the change because I didn't want to spend the money. You're going to have to go back and look at it again, too.
Any questions, staff?
Where was the typo?
Oh, it's, actually, it says that, the one that I know of, there may be others on, let's see, packet page 153, the vision team. It says that David Jamison is with the Rhodes End Improvement District Association. The district shouldn't be there.
I have one addition. Can you please put Kip Ward's name on there for Ward III, please?
Yes, we can do that, yes. If that's...
One quick question, then. Were you happy with our consultant? Or if they did?
Yeah, yeah. I thought she did a good job, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
You know, she took a lot of information. We had thousands of comments and distilled it down, 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 down to the, finally, through several goals and the policies under that, but then finally taking those goals together down to just the final vision statement, too. It was a lot of work pulling all that together, and just conducting the meetings and gathering the information was a huge undertaking.
And you're happy with her time and how it was spent?
It took longer than I wanted it to, but that's largely my fault, not hers.
Well, you know, I think you should probably leave your position shortly.
Yeah, yeah. I'm throwing myself on my sword here, so...
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Please.
There has been some confusion as to actually what is being asked of the council and what this document really is, and that confusion seems to center around, is this the vision statement that will end up in the comprehensive plan, and is that what you are approving? Well, the answer to that is no. What you're doing is simply accepting the work that has been done, which is, as Richard talked about, a culmination of a lot of input from the community. So, consider this the funnel through which people are speaking to you and all of the recommendations that are coming to you. Richard will now, if you accept this, Richard will now take this information and will work with the Planning Commission and the development of a, the comprehensive plan, which will include a section on the vision of the city. And that's what you will ultimately adopt, is it will be a part of the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I have a few comments. The first one was adding Kip back in, so I'm glad we took care of that. Another one is that, I love all the comments, they're so tiny, I can't read them in the appendix, but hopefully we can, when we get to the point. I just, I have a couple of questions about this. One is, how are we going to use this, all of this information, and how will you, I mean, you won't be here, but how, what's your vision for this vision?
My vision is that, I guess there's two things. One is, it's information that will help with the drafting of the comprehensive plan. There's a lot of goals and ideas in here that can be worked into the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. That's one piece, and the other piece is that we have it as a standalone document, and it can help to guide not just city activities, but also be information that the state can use, the school district can use, the fire district can use, you know, the water improvement district can use. Because it was such a big undertaking, there's so much information, so many comments from so many people, it is really a very broad statement from the people of what they're looking for. So, it's my hope that not just the city, but other organizations will be able to use it as well to guide what they do.
I could see how the city council can use it. There's a lot of good comments in there. I did have one concern, though, and that's about, with the open houses and we, those of us who participated, we're handed some dots, and they were unlimited, so we could put 50 dots on one thing if we wanted to. So, I was hoping that actually we might get some kind of weighted comments from the public so we kind of know what things were more important to the greatest number of people, but I don't think we can do that. So, I don't know how, I mean, these are, all these comments are, I'm just not sure how we could, how we can use them.
Yeah, I know, I understand what you're saying, because we do have, you know, like the number of comments we had on particular items, or the number of people who said that was good or whatever. If it's based on dots, yeah, it's possible that people might have manipulated that. I doubt that there was anybody putting a tremendous number of dots on, but somebody could have put 10 on something.
There were. I was handed a whole sheet of dots, and then the person that handed them to me said, you can use them all on one and come back and get another sheet, and if you need more, I'll give you a few more sheets of dots. I'm not kidding.
Chicago way.
I'm not kidding. So, I, so what I was hoping, you know, for a city council to get out of this is what people are thinking out there and how that can help us when we're making decisions, but I don't know how it can, because...
And get better instructions to be handing out dots.
I was at the, perhaps in retrospect, we should have limited the number of dots, but I was at all those meetings, and I didn't see people, any kind of outrageous manipulation going on, or kind of thing where you used up three sheets of dots on, I want food carts. So... I, you know, it's, it's just a matter of, we have information. It may not be as fine as we would like it to be, but I think as a whole, the information is very good.
And I have another question, because I would need a magnifying glass or a pair of them to read this. Is there an opportunity to get the, the comments in a larger type? They're like five-point.
Yeah, there's, we can, we can do that, but, you know, it's about 80 pages as it is, and larger...
I like to corral.
Larger type means more, more paper. I mean, if it's more electrons, I don't have a problem with.
Okay, so the answer is no, I'll look.
Well, the answer...
Ron can get you a larger copy if you need one, that's not...
I don't know if he can, that's, you know, I don't know if this is...
Well, I think technologically, if, you know, I can, well, I don't know if I can, because I'm not sure the format it's in, but we can get a larger version, I think, if you want.
There's just really good comments.
We'll see what we can do. Not a lot of people asking for it, just one counselor.
Just me, just me. Okay.
So far.
And finally, and finally, I would just like to say thank you to you and all the staff and the advisory committee and the management committee and all the participants. This was a major undertaking, and thank you so very much.
Thank you. I'll pass it on, too.
And this document is available on the website, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I too took the opportunity to attend some of these, and I was impressed with the total outreach in all different forums. So, you know, I think that was a great effort. As a result, when I got my copy, which for some reason is bigger and readable, hi-tech, what it did for me by focusing just on the goal statements and the initiatives under those was helpful in interpreting what the citizens are trying to tell us. Where I got hung up, and it was my issue, and I'll admit to that, was once I went into the tasks, and what that brought for me was, again, reaffirming our lack of communicating, getting the word out to our citizens of what really is going on. And, but, but once I bounced away from that, didn't get hung up on that, went back to the goals, I found it very helpful. But it did leave me with the concern that there are citizens out there that participated because we got their suggestions, and they aren't, somehow we're not communicating with them, that their idea was a good one, and by golly, we'd already done that, or we're in the process of doing that. And I, so I'm, I would encourage council, nothing for you, Richard, I would encourage council to actually look at some of this stuff, and I tried to go through it and mark on comments already done, and I've used this, actually, I talked to the Rotary Club using this, and pointed out that disappointment and challenged the Rotarians to work a little harder at even picking up our communication pieces and being more familiar with what we're doing, because, you know, I think that's ultimately will benefit us all if we can inform the community what we are doing, because it's really quite a bit, and this kind of captured it for me. So, thank you again, and I'm impressed with the group you were able to put together to spend time on it and all those who participated.
Thanks.
Anyone else? No? All right, thank you, Richard. Well, folks, you got a couple of choices, move to accept, move to accept with changes, move to reject.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to accept the Imagine Lincoln City Community Vision.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion.
Is that with the change of adding Kip Ward back in?
And wasn't there one other?
A correction.
That was the correction.
With the two, the two amendments?
Right.
Right, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, that was our discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Wow, we are at the bottom. City manager, city attorney reports.
I just have one item. We had discussed in a previous meeting about a work meeting next Monday, December 17th, to talk about raccoons and plastic bag bans. But also had talked about the possibility of fireworks, but I don't know whether we're going to need to do that in a work meeting. That's something we'll just bring back in a city council meeting. So, the question that I have tonight is, do you still want to hold that meeting, or would you rather push that off until after the first of the year?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I think this is a work session that the new elected, newly-elected councillors should take part in. I think we should postpone it till January or February.
Agreement? Not agreement? I'm good being here for it. So, we've got one yes, one no. Have it, not have it?
I don't care. I'm not. I would hope that the topic would be more than just plastic bags. It would do maybe, you know, one-time plastic stuff.
It'll be more comprehensive, I just needed a title.
Yeah. There's nothing saying we can't start it and carry it on, we're not going to make a decision that night, so I'm good going, 17th work?
No, let's not do it.
Do it? No, no. We got three and three. So, let's just pass?
Um, at a prior meeting, you passed ordinance 2018-22, uh, which extended the time for, uh, residents, participants in the, uh, 36th Street LID to submit deferrals, uh, sign up for installment payments, and in one case, enter into a development agreement. Uh, the deadline on the development agreement is the 28th, but you're not gonna be having another meeting, so, um, if they want to do a ORS Chapter 94 development agreement, there isn't time to do it. Uh, we'd have to go to the Planning Commission and the council, that's a land use decision. But if they just want to sign a development agreement that limits their options, um, they have an attorney now, and they may choose to do that. I actually think they're not going to do that, but, um, I'd like to leave their options open and ask for, uh, permission to sign a development agreement, uh, limiting the, uh, assessment to 23 equivalent residential units, or actually have the city manager and I sign it, if they submit something before the 28th deadline. If they don't, then they're gonna get stuck with 33, um, which is, as I see it, actually better for them, but it's up to them to decide, so, um, I just asked for approval, city manager and I sign a development agreement, standard agreement that would limit them to 23 if they choose to do that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I thought the number was 22.
23, um, for, for the development agreement, they have to pay for one and defer 22.
Oh, I see.
So, and then, same thing with the, uh, if they choose not to do a development agreement, their assessment is for 33, they have to pay one now and defer 32.
I see. Thank you.
So, moved on the agree statement earlier?
Second.
Motion second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries?
Thank you.
Isn't that it? Well, howdy-doody. Uh, no work sessions or executive sessions, additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items. Anyone here care to address the council? Pastor Harrison, yep or no?
I'd hate to think I have to coax you into public speaking.
I never really did like to speak publicly. I'm here today for the zonings, and so it's been moved on to the 28th, and that's okay, but one of the things that I think was important, and some of you are gonna be here next year, is I would like both sides, it always seems like it's the public against the city council, it's the public against the city council. I know you give three minutes for people to speak, but it's like, we'll let you speak for three minutes and then you're gone. We don't even have to do anything that you say, we're just gonna listen to you. And so, the three minutes really doesn't seem like you're getting anything. It seems like it's just kind of a ritual. Well, one of the rituals that you got rid of, and I would like to see it reinstated, so here I am saying it again, as you go into 2019, I would like to see the invocation put back into the city council meeting. The invocation is asking God for wisdom. And right off of the bat, the sign ordinance is gonna be very heated. You know that, I know that, everybody knows that. But one of the things that we, as human beings in America, we've gotten our side against their side, division, 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 division. And somewhere along the line, we have to come to the understanding that there is a win-win way of doing things. You don't win at the public's expense, and the public doesn't win at your expense. We should live our lives with a win-win. And so, in doing that, you have to not live up to the letter of the law, you have to live up to the spirit of the law, which is your golden rule, do unto others as you would have them do unto you. So, when it comes to sign ordinances, you need to try to see it from their side, not just from your side. There are two sides to every issue. In Lincoln City, I've been in Lincoln City since 1965, which is 54 years, so I've seen Lincoln City go through a lot of different things, but the sign ordinance has been there every year, every year, every year, trying to figure something out, trying to figure something out. The, and it's always people feeling left out. Mom-and-pop businesses made Lincoln City, and now we have some Bigfoot businesses, big footprint businesses, and they are the ones with the money, but somehow, money is not as important as people. And as a preacher, that's what I preach all the time, we need to care about one another. But it goes the same way. I want to thank all of you that serve our community. All you get is the negative. All you get is the negative, or you get a lot of negative, anyway, but, uh, you're doing a service, but it's a hard service. It's a hard decision to make, but try to make your decisions, especially on the 28th, with a win-win way of looking at things, because you don't want to win at somebody else's expense, because the city will lose then. Thank you for listening to me spout.
Thank you, Pastor, appreciate it. Anyone else?
Pastor Harrison?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Robert Harrison. I'm so sorry. It'll be on record.
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, anyone else? Seeing no one, okay. Uh, I think, um, council, yeah? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Down some comments. The city council?
I, um, just wanted to say that I attended my final, um, council of government's board meeting, um, last week, and one of the things in our packet was, um, a list of the legislative issues that, um, they will be addressing at the legislature next year. Um, I have forwarded a copy to Mr. Chandler and asked him to, um, distribute it to everyone so that you will have those, those issues. Council of government, um, will work with the League of Oregon Cities and the Association of Oregon Counties, um, but some of these are more, um, Lynn-Benton-Lincoln regionally significant than the statewide goals.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Uh, just want to remind the citizens that we have, uh, two more Beat the Wave uh, community meetings, um, Monday, December 17th, at the, um, Community Center, and then again on Thursday, December 20th, um, both these, or, and that's at the Community College. Both these are from 6:00 to 8:00, uh, again, December 17th and December 20th. And for those who haven't realized it, this is actually, uh, same material, just different locations and different times, so that more people can attend, and Beat the Wave is actually a very interesting, um, demonstration and information about how long it will take to, uh, get to high ground if a tsunami comes and from where, but it does the whole city, so it doesn't matter where you're from, um, you could see how long it's anticipated that you, from where you live. So, I'd encourage attendance to those. The other, other thing I have is, um, knowing that you're all gonna eat dinner tomorrow night, uh, you might think about the Beach Club, uh, that's not an advertisement for the Beach Club, but they're having a celebrity server for, uh, Family Promise, if you want to be, uh, served by Representative Gomberg and/or, uh, maybe entertained by him. The other one is County Commissioner-elect Katie Jacobson, though the two of them will be there, actually in North County, in Lincoln City, of all places, uh, serving dinner and entertaining, and, uh, they do a good job, you can, uh...
What time is that, Mr. Jacobson?
Uh, that's from 5:30 to 8:30, and, of course, if they do a good job, an extra tip to Family Promise would be a good idea.
And in the past, um, these celebrity server events have been kind of a competition between a couple of, um, organizations, but, um, it's my understanding that, um, Representative Gomberg and Commissioner-elect, um, Jacobson would like to work collaborative.
Oh, really?
Toward a common goal.
What is that?
I'm not gonna say anything.
What did Pastor Harrison just tell us? Something about there is a win-win, or, oh, there shouldn't be a win.
Oh, wow, wow, wow.
Thank you, Pastor.
Okay. Anyone else?
Um, yeah, I, I don't quite know how to bring up the subject of property, because we're still, um, looking for locations for transitional housing, warming shelter, something to look at in the future, and, um, one property that I had recognized was, um, a six-unit, uh, complex on Highway 101, and I was wondering if there was any interest in having, um, staff pursue that, uh, in addition to another property, uh, which is 2510 Northeast Highway 101, which is, um, adjacent to a property which would give us greater access, um, and also, that might be of interest to request staff to, um, get more information on this property. So, I'm, I'm bringing this up for discussion among the council, see if we can direct staff to do that.
If I may, I'm, I'm really appreciative of what you've done on this, and you and Council Hinton in, in following up on these things. I would maybe suggest, and if you had, I didn't hear it, but talk to the warming shelter folks first to go see it, and then say, yeah, this'd work, this wouldn't work, because they gotta man it and use it, and then go bring it back, say, yeah, we could use these, and then have the city look into it?
Well, I don't know if it's the horse before the cart...
Yeah.
But if it's a, a property for acquisition, maybe, uh, it would be an idea to put it out for a request for proposal, to see, you know, if there is a group out there, there might even be one in an adjacent county, it's already established a program, um, certainly mentioning it.
I'm good either way, I just, yeah, yeah.
I'm here, I hope they're watching.
Yeah. Is that it?
Me?
Yeah, well, what would 2018 be without?
I know.
Happy holidays.
Is that it?
I think so.
Good, great. Okay.
I'll just send you off, right, right?
So, just so I'm clear on our next meeting, because I was, I only, didn't pay a lot of attention four years ago. I was kind of in a little coma there, uh, about the whole thing. It, I'll come, open the meeting, we have swearing in, and then adios, right?
We'll have a little bit of a break, uh, for a few minutes.
Okay, well, I didn't know when to give my speech, so I'm gonna give my speech tonight. It's not long, it's not long, if you'll just bear with me, I'll try to get through it without blubbering like an idiot like I was doing.
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, Kathy, did we say that right, or is there something I'm missing?
We open the meeting, and we get through the consent agenda first, and then we'll recess, um, and then the new councilors are, oath of office is done, and then they're seated.
Okay, all right. That'll be great.
They continue from there.
All right, I'll, I'll say my, my piece now, then. Um, first, thanks to all the city staff and their tireless quality work. Uh, thank you to our city recorder, city attorney, and city manager for helping me, uh, muddle through these meetings, I appreciate it. Thank you to councilors past and present, I have learned from you all. Uh, thank you to the citizens of Lincoln City, uh, for your support and encouragement and criticism that only served to make me, uh, more aware as a mayor that we serve a greater purpose than our own needs. So, with that, for one final time, may God bless you all, may God bless Lincoln City. We are adjourned. I'm shocked! I'm shocked! Oh, fuck.